Good evening. We're going to open our regular meeting for this evening at 6:12 PM. We're not going to go to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of
Role call.
Mayor Biaseada.
Here.
Assistant Law Director Grandinetti.
Here.
Finance Director Frank.
Here.
Councilman-at-Large Elliott.
Here.
Councilwoman-at-Large Kelly.
Here.
Councilman-at-Large Costanzo.
Here.
Ward One Councilman Kyriasis.
Here.
Ward Two Councilman Martin. Ward Three Councilman Snitzky.
Present.
Ward Four Councilman Morrow.
Here.
Director of Public Service and Properties Bryda.
Here.
Building Commissioner Grassi.
Present.
Engineer Gerson.
Present.
I'm going to move to excuse Councilman Martin from this evening's meeting. Do I have a second?
Costanzo, second.
Role call.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kyriasis?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Snitzky?
Yes.
We now go to the reading and disposal of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Snitzky.
Having read the council minutes for the council meeting of July, that's incorrect, July fifteen, was it? Sorry, got the wrong, July twenty July fifteenth. Having read the council minutes for the meeting of July fifteenth, I find no errors or omissions, and therefore I move that they be approved as printed.
Kyriasis, second role call.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Kelly?
I am abstaining. I was absent from that meeting.
Kyriasis?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Snitzky?
Yes.
We have no resolutions of condemnation tonight. Reports of committees, planning zoning and economic development.
Mr. President, planning, zoning, and economic development, previous meeting minutes are filed with the clerk. Our next meeting is September thirtieth. We'll have miscellaneous approvals at the end of the meeting.
Public Works Council Pro temp Costanzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was July fifteenth. Our next meeting is September sixteenth.
Community Services Councilperson Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was July fifteenth. Thank you, Council President, for covering the meeting in my absence. The minutes are on file with the clerk, and our next meeting is September sixteenth.
Thank you. Police and Safety Councilman Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last meeting was July the fifteenth. Minutes are in file with the clerk. The next meeting will be held on September the sixteenth.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Councilman Morrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was tonight, July twenty-ninth. Meeting minutes have been submitted, and our next meeting will be on September thirtieth.
Thank you. Rules, Orders, and Ethics, last met this evening. Minutes are pending. Next meeting is September thirtieth. Finance, Civil Service, and Personnel, last met this evening. Minutes are pending, and next meeting is September sixteenth. We have no appointments or confirmations. Communications, petitions, and claims. We have a couple of communications this evening that the council clerk is going to read.
The first claim is from Molly Steadley. It says, "Good afternoon, Evelyn. I hope you're having a great Tuesday. On this bright and sunny day, I wanted to send a very brief email in regards to my support for ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-two-five and the meeting that is taking place this evening, which I am unable to be present at. As an HR professional for eighteen years and counting, I find this ordinance more than reasonable, and I am hopeful that council will do the right thing for our key leadership in our city as a whole and support this measure as well. I am requesting the statement be read aloud tonight at the meeting. My contact information is below in the event anything further is needed from me. Thank you for your attention to this important matter." The second one is from David Sporar. Dear Council, my name is David Sporar. I am a resident of Seven Hills at seven-six-five-one Edgewood Lane. For full disclosure, I am also privileged to be a member of the city's planning commission. I understand that the issue of increasing the compensation for the mayor position at the city is being voted on this evening from forty thousand dollars to a hundred eight thousand dollars and a hundred eight thirty-four dollars. Unfortunately, I cannot attend the meeting, but I did want to express my support for that increase. I think the position is properly considered full-time, not least of all because it carries with it the responsibility for manage over two hundred people year-round. Compensating for the position as such seems like a responsible thing to do. Civil service is a privilege. It is also extremely hard, and perhaps more often than not, thankless. Northeast Ohio is also a sophisticated metropolitan region. I think that compensating the mayor position with a competitive wage is important to encourage qualified people from our community to develop their full attention to that position and keep Seven Hills competitive among its surrounding communities, for which everyone in Seven Hills would benefit. I understand it is hard to prioritize what to spend taxpayer dollars on, but I think an expenditure like this is an important part of good governance. Since I cannot attend this evening's meeting, please read this email into the record. Thank you, and respectfully. The third is from Ed Foley. It says, "I've been involved with planning in the city for well over twenty years and was involved in the development of the City Master Plan. It's exciting to see plans finally becoming a reality. The city also is expanding and requires highly professional leadership. Our city is in a place where organizational development is now a requirement to keep the momentum going and build on successes. I fully support the organizational development of our city to include a competitively paid mayor slash safety director. It's exciting to be at a point where our city has such momentum and plans have become reality. The leadership of a mayor slash safety director is essential to advancing and achieving even greater levels of success. This requires the stability and access to those that would want to hold this position professionally and with a competitive salary. I fully support a competitive level of compensation for the essential position of mayor slash safety director in our fine and positively developing city." From Ed Foley.
That's all we have this evening for communications.
Mr. President.
Mayor Biaseada.
Before we get into the rest of the agenda, I know we got an email from a concerned resident trying to help us. And the email was in regards to the emergency clause on amended ordinance thirty-six twenty-two-five, and I'd like to get a ruling before we get into commentary from our law director with your permission.
That's fine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I wish you to comment on the emergency ordinance and the practicality and rationale and the legal standing of the city in regards to the utilization of this measure on thirty-six twenty-two-five.
Thank you, Mayor, and for a lot of members in the audience who may not know that the term emergency legislation is kind of a legislative term of art. It signifies a couple of things, but one of the things that it does is it enacts the legislation immediately, but also it requires a supermajority for council to vote on. It's not just a simple majority. It is a supermajority. We need at least two-thirds vote of council to pass by emergency legislation. Typically and customarily, anything involving pay with city employees is done via emergency. And we do that for a multitude of reasons, one of which is we don't want to cause turmoil. We want the legislation to go through quickly and effectively. We don't want it to turn into a political football. Also, many other cities in northeast Ohio, especially in dealing with mayor salary, do it as emergency. We're following in the footsteps of every other suburb, our neighbors, that have passed compensation legislation via emergency ordinance. This is something that is commonly done and it's routinely done like we do. I am the Assistant Law Director, so I don't get to preside over many council meetings, but when I do, typically when things are on third reading, they are submitted as an emergency. So, Mayor, is there any other questions that you have as relation to legislation via emergency?
No, I think you touched upon it, that it's usual and customary for any pay ordinance, whether that's an electoral official or a rec manager or a director of community services. They're typically, even when they're introduced through committee and then through three readings as this ordinance was done, that emergency clause is usual and customary added on. And when the email came in, the administration looked at one just as quickly as possible, Brooklyn Heights, Bay Village, Bedford, Braxville, Maria. Those were the ones we were able to find on the internet, and all the emergency clause, it just illustrated that this is usual and customary and completely in line with every city in Ohio that we've looked at.
I have a question for the Assistant Law Director, if I could, please.
Councilperson Kelly.
Thank you. Assistant Law Director, is it customary to put an emergency clause on an ordinance that will not be effective for two and a half years yet?
Well, what the voters did in twenty-twenty-three was give power to this legislative body to be able to adjust the wages. By passing it as an emergency, you're taking away the political football that gets created by doing it in the way that you were suggesting in an opposite way. So, yeah, I do think that it is essential. It's my understanding. I didn't draft legislation. Eric, the law director, did. But I can speak to the terms of any time you're doing anything with compensation, it should be done as an emergency. And if you look around to other cities and communities, whenever they do compensation legislation, it is most commonly done as emergency.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to go to council open to the audience on legislation only. So if anybody has any comments tonight on any of the ordinances or resolutions, they can get up now and speak.
We have a large audience, Mr. President. Maybe if you called them by row.
Yeah, I'm going to go row by row. So Pierre, you want to state your name and your address? Yep. You have about three minutes, please.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is Pierre Bijani. I'm a resident of this beautiful city. I'm the president of Cameo, the Cleveland American Relief Organization. And we are proud of what this mayor has been doing and what he's done and his involvement in the community, in the different groups, how he supports, how he generates businesses to this community, and what he's done, a tremendous amount. And I cannot emphasize enough of the importance of having a mayor such as Tony, of being getting the job done. This is a position that should have been full-time position from a long time ago, and I'm glad it came into conclusion now. And what's it content, it can't, a lot of efforts on the side of the mayor to be involved and to be able to communicate with all the residents and all of the businesses. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pierre. Anybody else in the first row?
Yes, my name is Joe Andrus, one zero zero four John Glenn Drive. I've lived in Seven Hills for a few years, and this wage thing has been going on for years, and it's, nothing's happening. When I was on a planning commission, it even was brought up. The suburbs around us thought it was crazy that the low pay that the mayor gets and all the council net. It's, we're not even paying minimum wage when you figure out how many hours they put in. It's crazy, and I just don't know why we don't, like now, like I say, I've been here a number of years. Any function you go to, everybody is happy. It's run right. I remember a number of years ago, we didn't have money, and they canceled the home days. And just like the fire station, we're doing a lot of repairs there. When that station was built, I asked the mayor at the time, "Why did you use a truss roof?" Well, he had no reason why. I says, "If you ran a regular stick roof, you could have had a second floor in there if we'd ever go to full-time." And he says, his answer was, "Well, nobody ever told me that." I said, "Did you ask anybody?" There's a lot of people in this city that are qualified. All we have to do is ask, and they'll help out. Just like this development that's being finally built off Rockside and Crossview. I've been off the planning commission for about twenty years now. And it was discussed then that it was going to happen. It just never happened because I know why it didn't happen, but I'm not going to say why it didn't happen. I don't want to be getting in trouble here. But it's crazy. I'm very happy with the way Seven Hills is. If I could vote on it today, I'd say I'd like to have all of us re-elected to as many terms as you want. Mayor, council, anything, because it's running smoother than it has ever run in years. In case you're interested, how many years I've lived here, want to take a guess? Try eighty-five. So I've seen a lot here. Not all of it's been good, but lately I think it's great, and I'd like to just see it continue. Why change anything? If it's not broke, why fix it? And it's the same with this. Everything is being done like the mayor. Every time there's a problem, they're calling, calling, calling.
Mr. Andrus, you have thirty seconds, please.
Pardon?
Thirty seconds. Fluffed at speed. Your time is up.
My time is up. Okay.
I hate to cut you off, but. Anybody else in the first row?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Jemay Chambers, and I live at fifty-seven hundred Chatham Drive, Seven Hills, Ohio. I've been a Seven Hills resident for twenty-three years collectively. I am here to address support, to address and to support the amended ordinance thirty-six twenty-two-five to modify the compensation and position of the mayor and safety director. I've had the absolute honor and privilege to know Mayor Biaseada from a professional and personal perspective. As all are aware, Mayor Biaseada has dedicated himself between full-time employment and the city of Seven Hills. As mayor of our community, he holds and is required to wear many hats. Not only has he been elected to mayor, he has taken on many other responsibilities and has excelled as a safety director, economic developer, human resource director, just to name a few roles. He has proven to be a master grant writer and has awarded Seven Hills the ability to enhance our city and landscape. Coming from the private sector, I can tell you the worth of an individual responsible for merely one of these roles, and of all of them, far exceed the current salary of our current mayor. Given the current complexities of government, the city of Seven Hills needs to amend the mayor safety director to a full-time position. To do so, we'll ensure focus and dedication to the city where it belongs. Salary should be commensurate with that of cities similar in size to Seven Hills, and it's time our community aligns and performs comparable to that of other neighboring communities. It's of benefit to the residents, future mayors, and the future of our city to approve the amendment. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else in the first row? Jack?
Jack Thrain, six-two-six-four, Crossview Road. I would just like to say I've been a resident and homeowner in this city for over forty-seven years. This is perhaps the best, or is the best, mayor and council that we have had in forty-seven years. They've worked very, very hard to accomplish many things in this city. I feel very safe and honorable to say that I live in Seven Hills. Many years ago, that was not the case. Tony or Anthony has made many, many improvements in our city, along with our council, and I believe he deserves every dime of this money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. We'll start on the second row over here. Anybody over here in the second row? Want to speak? No? Carol?
Carol Supansik, two-seven-two-five Chestnut Road. In regards to ordinance thirty-six twenty-two-five, the ordinance outlines the rationale for this increase in salary beautifully. I will add to it that this mayor and hopefully future mayors will reach out to civic organizations, to other governmental subdivisions, all for the benefit of this city. Our current mayor does that. Hopefully, our future mayors will do that also. With this increase in compensation, this will be initiative for qualified people to fill the office of mayor in the future. I do hope and pray that compensation makes it possible for a mayor to be full-time and afford to live in this city. So please, I ask for your vote, yes, on ordinance thirty-six. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Anybody else? Anybody else in the second row?
Martha Whitmer, sixty-one hundred Crossview, Seven Hills. I've lived here since nineteen sixty-one, and I agree with everyone who has spoken before me, and I sure hope you guys vote for this ordinance. And if it was possible, we should give the mayor back pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the second row right here?
Yes, hello. David Ronzki, twenty-two twenty-three Chestnut Road. My family moved here when I was nine years old. I've been a resident here most of those years. We purchased, when I got my chance to buy my first house, we bought it here in Seven Hills in two thousand and three. So during my time as a homeowner here and a property taxpayer, I've been severely disappointed with the prior mayor's administrations and management of the budget of this city. And for the very first time in my homeownership here, I finally encountered a mayor that I can feel comfortable not having to watch over his actions. He has, to me, everything I've checked out, he has substantially demonstrated that he is really caring of what he does here and how he spends our money. So I feel for the first time that it is appropriate to pay a mayor in this city an appropriate level of compensation. So I humbly request that you please vote positively for this ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second row, Brian?
Mayor and council, my name is Brian Kelly, thirty-seven seventeen Stephen Drive. I've been a resident here for twenty-one years. My background is in staffing. I own two staffing firms. For this ordinance of thirty-six twenty-two-five, it is more than fair. If you were to look at the compensation from other cities, look what he does. If we were to look at what he has done for this city, what he has done for us residents, we're one of the premier suburbs, and we're getting better each day. Just look at Rockside Road. It was nothing but woods. It was nothing but a landslide of mud coming down there. Finally, we're seeing something happen there. I'm a resident there. I'm Ward Two. I'm more than happy to finally see something happen over there. It's from great folks like yourself, but also from your leadership. So knowing what compensation, this is what I do every single day, seven days a week. It is more than fair to pay him what we are asking to pay. So, council, I would say strongly, it's, if I was up there with you, I would be voting yes, but I'm a resident here. So, thank you all for your time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Brian. I'm going to start banking the third row, Mike.
Michael Coyle, one oh eight East Parkway Drive, Seven Hills. I rise in support of this amendment. Next two weeks from today, I will celebrate sixty-six years as a resident of this community, which is all but one year of my, one month of my life. I can remember when the mayor of the city of Seven Hills used to drive the bus down Broadview Road to Public Square twice in the morning and twice in the afternoon because CTS didn't come up past Brook Park Road. I can remember the good years of the early seventies in this community. I can remember the bad years when the Ward Clause in Ward One nearly bankrupted this city. And so many opportunities for development went to Independence instead of where they should have gone, to Seven Hills. I lived through the toxic environment of the early two thousands, when two grown men purported to be public servants and did nothing but serve themselves in their leadership of the city. And I have watched this man, who stood in my driveway many, many years ago, when he first decided to run for council. And I remember my late mother, who also shares a name with Mayor Tony's mother, Beverly. And she said to me that night, when he wasn't even elected a councilman yet, "That man will be the mayor of the city of Seven Hills and will be the mayor who saves the city of Seven Hills." And I am proud to speak on behalf of this amendment, no one is more deserving of this increase and much more than that man sitting right there and in addition to support of this council. I am now proud to say that I'm once again a resident of the city of Seven Hills. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else in the third row?
Hello, everyone. My name is Julio Monaco. I live on Shady Lane. I bought my first house when I was twenty-one on East Dartmoor. I now live on Shady Lane, like I said. So that's sixty-five years that I've lived in this city. I've gone through a lot of mayors. I've known a lot of mayors. There were times that snow, they wouldn't come down the street, push snow, and when you're driving, you say, "I hope I can make it to Independence because the roads will be clean." We don't have that problem, and we haven't had that problem for a while. There's a lot of good things that happened. Flooding has been taken care of. A lot of, can't even mention all the things that were supposed to have been done over the past fifty years that promises and promises. Now we're finally getting them done. My only disappointment is that the mayor would only get a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the third row now?
I don't have any prepared remarks. My name is Joe Burdick. I live on Drexel Drive. I haven't lived here as long as Mr. Andrus, but what I can say is, since I moved my family here from Broadview Heights, I've seen nothing but changes, changes for the good. Mayor Biaseada, when he became mayor, he has the respect of the surrounding communities. He has the respect of our congressman. Everything he touches has been, I can't, first of all, I can't believe he's doing it on a part-time salary. My family and I are in complete support of the pay raise, and I wanted to come here and express my gratitude to not only the mayor, but to all of you. This community is an amazing community. I live by Calvin Park, and I see people coming to the park, like you talked about the splash pad. Kids from Parma, kids from Independence, families bringing their kids, their baseball teams to our community, and that, it fills me with pride because the hard work that you guys are doing with our parks. We've got Myers. Great things have happened in Seven Hills, and my family and I support you, Mayor, and I wanted to express my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Go back to the fourth row. In the fourth row.
Ken McKenna, nineteen oh eight Ridgeview. I'm new to the city. I've only lived here twenty five years. So I don't have the experience the others do, but when I moved here, this was a crazy city. We had, not to go into history, but we had a mayor that everybody hated. And then we got one that loved all the celebrities and got us in the newspaper, if you remember, and it was chaos. Then we had one that was do nothing. First time I met Tony was, I think it was twenty sixteen, and the dear legislation had passed. He was on council. The the current council, because I was very active in pushing for the dear legislation, had asked me and three other gentlemen to put together ad hoc rule committee. We did it. We had one meeting. We're getting ready to have another meeting, and I got a call from Tony, which I didn't know from Adam, and said, oh, you're having a meeting, and, you know, when's the meeting? I want to be there. And I said, uh, it's at my house. And we were there. Tony comes in, looks at what we're doing, takes notes, talks to us for a little bit, saw that we were following the rules, and left. And I remember the gentleman, I'm not gonna name, name's Charlie Hasta. Oh, I named it. But we looked at each other like, that was a council person? Because that's just not the way things were. There was something different about him from the beginning. So, you know, I'm not gonna go on and on. Everybody's covered it. I, some of you know I'm a construction inspector by trade. I've worked on projects in this city. I see him today, drives down the job site, how are things going? Looking around, what are things? Comes by at least twice a week. Never saw anybody else before that. And and I work in cities all over the area. You never see mayors doing that. Whenever I work in Seven Hills, I see him. So this is money well spent, long overdue. My only regret is what other people said, that it doesn't go into effect now. So I want to thank, urge every councilperson to vote for this, because we'll remember if you don't.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Joe Linway, Shady Lane. I've known quite a few of you for a long time, Justin, Mike, Pat, Stacy. I've gotten to know Mayor Biaseada pretty decently over the last couple of years. My grandpa, though, about sixty, sixty five years ago, back in the late fifties, early sixties, helped transition the city from a village to become a city. He was president of council here. He loved the city. And I just wanted to say that I think if he was still here today, he'd be very proud of all of you, the leadership of this city today. And I think it's deservant. Okay, take care. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody in the back?
Sorry, I don't move fast. I'll keep this short. There's been so many wonderful things said. I just recently, or I'm sorry, Mark Kudelowski, Skyline Drive. I just recently became aware that the mayor's job was a part time job. And I found that hard to believe with everything that's gone on and been done, that he only works part time hours. And I don't think it's right for somebody to work part time hours or work full time hours and get part time pay. I mean, I remember for years, they talked about a Myers going in, and it was always in Broadview Heights. Well, he brought the Myers here to Seven Hills. There's been arrival of new, arrivals of new businesses in the city, charter updates and cleanup, job creation, expand tax base, significant commercial development, completion of the North Park Lodge, a very high increase in response time by First Energy. When you compare the the mayor's responsibilities and performance to those of leaders of other well-run cities, this this proposal is a bargain for us. I fully support the increase of the mayor's salary. He has earned it. And more importantly, the city needs someone of his caliber and worth a work ethic to continue this community moving forward. Thank you, consul. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else in the back?
Not too much to add from my end, but my name is George Cromick. I'm six eight one Longridge Drive. Just wanna support everything else, everybody else has said prior to me. I've been in the finance world for over thirty years, and and I have never seen a city as well, as well run as it is right now. Tony, the consul, Mike commendate, commend you for what you guys have done. And I am in support of raising the mayor's salary. A hundred eight thousand is actually low by today's standards. So I do support it, and I I recommend your vote for it.
Thank you. Anybody else in the back?
Yeah, Bob Roble, nine seven five Winchester Oval. I would like to to just say that when I was running for council a few years ago, one of the things that I I ran on was that I was gonna be an advocate for good government. And I really feel that finally we're 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 addressing a need here, a good government issue, good compensation for any mayor. And Tony shows what a good mayor can do. And hopefully, when he decides to hang it up, so we'll we'll have the incentive for somebody else to come along. And, well, it's a, he says a standard. Hopefully, they can, they can do that. So anyway, it's a good government issue. Vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Anyone else? You have one minute.
Good evening. Tony Terry, seventy six thirty two Horse Road. Some of you may know that I serve as the Director of Community Services. In my role, I have taken the responsibility of advocating for our residents, and I'm here to to make a point, a specific point. I worked thirty years in the private world. I've now been eleven years in the public world. To me, it is ludicrous to think that you would have any type of of operation and not have your leader, whomever it may be, be there in a full time capacity. And I'll give an example of when we decided to make some changes to the baseball fields, and what we put in there were these gigantic rocks that kids were going to slide into. And I vehemently went to the to the mayor at the time, as well as the gentleman who was working on the project, and expressed that it's a terrible idea. It's it's the wrong way to go about it. Somebody's gonna get hurt. My point is, when you have somebody a-
Mr. President, in the event he doesn't get that back up, I'd just like to state, and the law director can verify this, that Sunshine Law only requires that meetings are open to the public. There's no requirement for broadcast. There's no requirement even for comment. These are just things that we've always done here above and beyond what other cities do. So if the meeting needs to continue, it can. Assistant Law Director?
We're good.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I would agree the-
We're good.
We would be, we're we're back online?
Okay. Well, never mind.
We're all set. We're not gonna go to the reading of ordinances and resolutions, and we're gonna go to the third reading of amended ordinance-
Mr. President?
Yes?
Was there anyone else in the audience? We got interrupted by the power outage.
Anybody else? No?
If I maybe before we can begin, I just wanna, may I have the floor for a second? I just appreciate all the comments from the audience today for amended ordinance thirty six twenty twenty five. Remind everyone that this ordinance will take effect for the next mayoral term, which is almost two and a half years away. And so I like what I heard in terms of setting the bar. But for the future of the city, whomever that next mayor is, we don't want to go backwards. You want to be able to ask he or she in that role to work everybody as hard as I have and will continue. And what you heard in some of these comments today, that it is a twenty four seven job. And what people don't see behind the scenes, in order to get your forty million in grants, in order to get some of that economic development, you participate in things you will not ever believe you do. To be effective and to be the best for all you people, you're going to events every night just about. You're going to political functions. You're going to groups like Cameo. You're going to Irish groups. You're going to support other political leaders in their endeavors because there's projects where you share things, like Parma, we share the maintenance of Broadview Road. We're working on sharing something on Rockside Road with Independence. We share services with Independence like animal control. We show a canine officer with Broadview Heights. And if you aren't out there working in the system, doing things on weekends and nights, you are not gonna perform to the level that this job requires. And what you want for the future, because what I've seen in the past, when we paid fourteen thousand in my first term, and now we halfway step in the second term, and we're gonna get it to a bottom range of our peers. In twenty twenty seven, we will get this ordinance, will get us to a bottom range. You have to set that expectation and accountability. If you have a job that pays fourteen thousand, the argument is, well, we'll find somebody to sit in that chair. Well, let me tell you what has happened over the last forty years. You get fourteen thousand dollars worth of effort. And you you can say, well, hey, Tony, you did it. And that's true, because it had to be done, and my whole life, I do what needs to be done. But there's not everybody that has the time, the flexibility, that can work two full time jobs, because that's what it's been for a long time. And it, i- if you don't have a family or a child, maybe you can get it done. If you don't have parents, maybe you can get it done. If you have any semblance of a life, the city side will suffer because natural instinct will take you to the job that pays your mortgage. And if this passes, the future mayor, whomever that may be, we can set the expectation that your number one responsibility is the residence of the city of Seven Hills. And if you don't work as hard as the person that was in that office previously, then you don't belong in that chair, because we're paying you to put your soul focused heart and soul twenty four seven into this job. And if you can't make it so that person can't do that, that is what they call penny wise and pound foolish. And some of the comments I've heard, not here tonight, have been foolish. You want a leader that can be accountable. You want a leader that will be there. You want a leader that goes to the county, goes to the state, goes to the federal government. And these things were not happening before. And fight for you to bring money back amongst managing the departments. Decisions were made in a vacuum because there was not a leader here. People tried their best, but it wasn't good enough because they had to go work another day job. Even under my own term, I look back with all the success we hear tonight, and I say, things could have been better had I not been sitting in an office in Shaker Heights when something major was going on. And there's many people here in the audience, and many people watching at home, whether they admit it or not, they call the mayor, snowstorm, eleven P M. on a Saturday night. Power goes out on a Sunday. I get a text. I even get calls when there were fires during the microburst. Is no argument whatsoever that the job is not twenty four seven. And this is not about me. It's about the future of the city. And the next mayor needs to be compensated like every other city in northern Ohio. There's nothing special about the borders of Seven Hills where we can continue to expect the results we've had in the last six years without stepping up and acting like every other community. And that's all we're accomplishing here tonight if thirty six twenty twenty five is passed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, mayor.
Mr. President, is there-
Councilmore?
When we read through and vote, is there time for council talk?
Talk, talk now before we-
Oh, okay, all right. I guess I could speak as a councilperson and a resident. I guess I'd be the youngest or the least amount of time lived here, twenty years. Oh, Ed's got me beat by five. But so I am extremely supportive of this amendment to adjust Mayor Biaseada's compensation.
Point of order, Mr. President.
There.
The compensation's for the next mayor, not me.
Sure, okay. Yeah, all right, fine, for the next mayor. In my opinion, it's a very easy decision. I prepared like a Tom like speech here, so. As someone who grew up in this city, I've worked here since I was a teenager, and I've had the privilege now to serve on this council. I've seen firsthand the sacrifices made by so many people. Two of them that come to mind right away are Tony Terry and Jen Berger. It worked for far less than they've deserved. And they've now, under this administration, been more than, I mean, not, I won't say the, as much as they should make, but they've been compensated fairly. And I know there are others, and I may be forgetting names here, but those are the situations I know personally. When I worked at the rec center as a twenty year old, I remember not feeling comfortable enough, and Jen could attest to this, to ask for a raise because I felt so bad that Jen had her salary cut by previous administration. Oh, sorry. That kind of treatment of our city workers left a lasting impression on me. Fast forward today, we're extremely fortunate to have Mayor Biaseada. He's restored not just fiscal discipline, but a sense of pride, progress, and purpose to our city. He's worked tirelessly, as he said, nights, weekends, holidays, not for recognition, certainly not for a paycheck. If you do the math with the hours he puts in, he might, and I stress, I say might, make a quarter an hour. Since I've been alive, we've never had a mayor as effective as transparent and committed as Mayor Biaseada. And supporting this ordinance isn't about rewarding him. It's also about recognizing the standard he set and making sure we can attract and retain great leaders for him, like him, in the future. I really want my two year old to grow up in the city of Seven Hills, and I don't want him to have a mayor that, quite frankly, has to work for poverty level income. Public service should have been self sacrificed to the point of burnout. If we want capable, driven people to leave our city, whether it's now, ten, twenty years from now, we need to make sure the compensation reflects the gravity and demands of the job. So I am a hundred percent supportive of this ordinance because I support fairness. I support leadership, and most of all, I support the future of my city. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. President?
Council Pro Tem Costanza?
Keep it short and sweet. I think I heard a common theme among our residents and how I feel myself. I want a mayor that's gonna put the city first and his and its residents.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. President?
Consul Person Kelly?
Thank you. I do have several things to address. First of all, my comments are not placed towards our mayor. I think he's done a great job. This, what we have before us is scheduled to happen in two and a half years. And I do agree with everyone in this room about the fine job that our mayor has done. But I do have some concerns, and I hate to be the heavy. But in November of twenty twenty three, our residents voted to approve ballot issue sixty eight. The portion that I'm referring to within ballot sixty eight is quoted as to provide that the mayor and law director's compensation may not be increased or decreased in term and have changed shall not be less than a minimum of forty thousand per annum. Now, while the term compensation is a broad term, within the context of ballot issue sixty eight, what our voters voted on in November of twenty twenty three, it is very clear that it is speaking to a salary compensation and salary compensation only. In the ordinance before her, before us this evening, ordinance thirty six dash twenty twenty five, in my humble opinion, this ordinance goes well beyond what our voters agreed on in ballot issue sixty eight. Ballot issue sixty eight did not speak to creating a full time mayoral position, providing health benefits, use of a city owned slash leased vehicle, a monthly stipend, and vacation time. As I mentioned in a previous council meeting, these are material and substantial changes to our charter that does require a vote by our residents. I'm not saying I'm against all of those things awarding that to a mayor. I think all of those things could be well deserved. However, I believe it's in conflict with what our residents- However, I believe it's in conflict with what our residents voted on in Issue 68, and I do believe that should be put before our residents. I am not opposed to raising the mayor's salary, but I am conflicted as far as what Ordinance 36 says versus what our residents voted on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
Are there any comments from council on what was just said? Any councilperson going to speak up?
Yes, I was just going to say, Councilor Snitsky, you have anything to say?
I'll hold my comments for right now.
So this is what I'm going to say.
Well, Mr. President, I'm going to ask for a ruling from law. We have an interpretation by the councilwoman on the charter that says that council doesn't have the authority to change this. The charter amendment, which I helped put on the ballot, says it should not go below 40,000, and any other compensation can be decided by council, of which is consistent with every city I've researched. At a time, 10 years ago, I did research, and there were two cities that had to go to a vote of people to change the compensation. It was Cleveland, I'm sorry, East Cleveland and Seven Hills. And when this was explained to the people, people wanted us to operate and function like every other city. And they said, in November 2023, this went to a vote of the people, and the people said, we want your city to operate like every other municipality. And every charter amendment passed. And the charter amendment said that councils still have the authority. The councilwoman read the amendment that said it cannot go below 40,000. Below 40,000 was put into the charter to prevent what the bad politics of the past. So if you got a council that did not support their mayor, it would prevent a vote saying, we're going to pay the mayor a dollar, because we don't like that mayor. So it said, $40,000 shall be the minimum. Now, the other things they speak to in terms of healthcare, that doesn't have to be in there. It's federal law, that if you're a full-time employee of an entity that employs more than 50 people, and we're around over 208, any full-time employee, by federal law, has to be offered. So that's not even a vote. In terms of a car, use of a building, that's already in the charter, and the mayor already has this. The law director, who isn't here today, in his wisdom, decided to be in complete transparency. And unlike other cities, given the history, he wrote all those benefits into the ordinance, when typically, in some of the examples I have in front of me, it just says the mayor will have the benefits of a full-time employee, which would be vacation, healthcare. And every director in this city, Sands Finance Director, has use of a car for everything that I stated earlier, it's 24/7, there's liability issues, you got to drive the meetings downtown three, four times a week, et cetera, et cetera. And these are the tools of the trade that every other mayor has. So to make a campaign issue out of that, and that's what it is, campaign issue, is all it is, these are tools of the trade. And I'd like a ruling from my law department on whether the charter requires this as a vote or not.
I will give that ruling right now, and that amendment, the charter amendments are, the councils shall have the power to fix the salary of each officer, employee, member of any department, division, board, commissioner of the city, whether appointed or chosen. However, the mayor and law director's compensation may not be increased or decreased interim, which is not happening here, and if changed, shall not be less than 40,000 per annum. This is clearly within the power of council to do. This force has been beaten to death, again and again. This is within the complete control of the members of council and this legislative body that stands before you all today.
What I'm going to say is, anybody that's read the Cleveland.com article, the Gazette, knows how I feel about this. I've lived here for 35 years, this is by far the best mayor we've ever had. Just look at the Rockside Road project. It sat there for 16 years, nothing. Look at it now, in two years, three years, the best is yet to come. Saturday afternoon, I had a graduation party to go to up here with my wife and daughter, and I pull in here at 4:15, and whose car is in the parking lot? I open up City Hall and come in, and who's sitting in his office, working on a Saturday afternoon at 4:15? So, this mayor totally deserves, I don't think it's, I don't even think it's enough, like many people here said. He's basically doing four jobs. And I just hope everybody on council agrees. So that's all I have to say. Anybody else on council?
Mr. President.
Councilman Elliott.
As we walked around to get our signatures this year, I was kind of shocked, because I asked this question, because I was going to bring it up. I asked how they thought the mayor's salary was as a part-time mayor, and people were absolutely shocked that this city has a part-time mayor. I'm not even exaggerating, it was probably 50 out of the 130 people that I saw, probably 50 or 60 said, we have a part-time mayor, he's not full-time. And when I gave that salary, they were in shock. So, this is a no-brainer, number one. Number two, I petitioned when I got on here with the fire. I'm the chairperson for police and fire, and being a police officer, I noticed a lot of the things wrong. Met with Chief Salum, we fixed a lot of things in this city. One of the things was putting a full-time fire chief on, which we didn't have. We had a full-time police chief, we had a part-time fire chief. That wasn't going well, I can tell you that right now, and we didn't have squads, which are kind of important to a city. We had zero. They were broke, and we were borrowing from other cities. Hiring a full-time fire chief, we now have new squads, which we transfer every five years, because we have a squad assistance fund. We have a brand-new engine for fires that we actually have in Seven Hills. And just the staff in general has changed. So when we looked at the mayor, I know our fire chief goes to all the calls, when we had a tornado last year, or two years ago, any fire, this guy's on that. He's driving there in his personal vehicle, which, to me, and I've told him this many times, he shouldn't even be doing that, it's a liability to us. What if he hit a downline or something like that? He's got a family now, you know? He has to have a city-owned vehicle, it just makes sense. It's just, no one should be against this at all. I'm all for it, and I'm glad, I wish we could go back in time and give him the money right now, I mean, to be honest with you. Thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to make it clear that the mayor has always had access to a city vehicle. What we've typically used, myself and the mayor's before, is a retired vehicle from police or other departments. And when I need, when we got 110,000 mile Ford that's rusting, and that's how I represent your city today, and a very eight-year-old vehicle that's rusted, but it gets me from point A to point B when I need to do city business. So, this is nothing new, as once again, our law director, Eric Moore, decided to write these things out in full verbiage, so that there's, can be no question. But these are tools of the trade that every mayor has. So it's not something special that's going to be given to the next mayor. Every mayor in the City of Seven Hills had this right previously. The stipend that was mentioned, that my spending allowance a month was, since 1983, it's $75 a month. So that was mentioned by Councilwoman Kelly, that the mayor has a stipend, but she left out that it's $75, and that pays for magazine subscriptions, 100 lunches that I take other officials to. Somehow, I'm like in the negative 400 range on that every month, but that's okay, I love what I do. So just, let's be real what that is. And that's not changed in this. It's the, my allowance, monthly allowance, is $75 a month, on a city that brings in around $35 million a year. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we're going to go to the third reading of amended ordinance number 36-2025.
Mr. President.
Council Pro Tem Costanzo.
I move to suspend the rules under the charter and read amended ordinance 36-2025 by title only for its third and final reading.
Curriazza, second, roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriassus.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitsky.
Yes. Is there further motion?
Mr. President.
Council Pro Tem Costanzo.
I move to approve the emergency clause in Section 3 of Ordinance 36-2025.
Curriazza, second, roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriassus.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitsky.
Yes. Is there further motion?
Mr. President.
Council Pro Tem Costanzo.
I move to approve the emergency clause in Section 3 of Ordinance 36-2025.
Curriazza, second, roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriassus.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitsky.
Yes. Is there further motion?
Mr. President.
Council Pro Tem Costanzo.
I move to pass amended ordinance 36-2025 as an emergency measure.
Curriazza, second, roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
No.
Curriassus.
Yes.
Morrow.
Absolutely.
Snitsky.
Yes. Amended ordinance number 36-2025 has passed. We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 37-2025.
Mr. President.
Councilman Morrow.
I move that we suspend the rules of the charter and read the ordinance 37-2025 by title only for its first and final reading.
Curriazza, second, roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriassus.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitsky.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Osborn Engineering of Cleveland, Ohio, for an amount not to exceed $24,000, including all reimbursable expenses to provide architectural design and engineering services for the City of Seven Hills Toilet Room Accessibility Renovation Project at 7325 Summit View Drive and declaring an emergency.
Is there further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Morrow.
I move that we approve the emergency clause found in Section 4 of Ordinance 37-2025.
Curriazza, second, roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriassus.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitsky.
Yes. Is there further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Morrow.
I move to pass ordinance 37-2025 as an emergency measure.
Curriazza, second, roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriassus.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitsky.
Yes. Ordinance number 37-2025 has passed. We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 38-2025.
Mr. President.
Mayor Biaseada.
Thank you, I'd just like to briefly speak to our 38-2025, and give thank you to State Senator Jerry Serino. I worked with him very closely for several months, that goes through this legislative process, working with him and other officials in Columbus, evenings and weekends. And with his help, we brought back $500,000 to the city for this repair at the fire station. And in my experience in 10 years and folklore, that was the largest award ever for a capital improvement for a small city like this. And that's what effective leadership can do, if you got a person here on the job.
Thank you, Mayor. We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 38-2025.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Kelly.
I move to suspend the rules of our charter and read ordinance number 38-2025 by title only for its first and final reading.
Elliott, second.
Roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriassus.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitsky.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Millstone Management Group, and appropriating an amount not to exceed $380,687 for the fire station improvements project and declaring an emergency.
Is there further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilperson Kelly.
I move to approve the emergency clause found in the last section of ordinance number 38-2025.
Elliott, second.
Roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriassus.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitsky.
Yes. Is there further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilperson Kelly.
I move to pass ordinance number 38-2025 as an emergency measure.
Elliott, second.
Roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriassus.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitsky.
Yes. Ordinance number 38-2025 has passed.
Mr. President, I'm recusing myself from 39-2025.
Before we read this, I have something I want to read here real quick. A couple days after our last council meeting, I reached out through the law department to our outside counsel, Joe Deemer, for an opinion on this ordinance number 39-2025, and this is his response. Dear Council President Curriassus and members of council, I have been requested to provide an opinion relative to the legality and enforceability of ordinance number 39-2025 purporting to amend Section 151.05E of the codified ordinances providing healthcare benefits to certain additional employees in the City of Seven Hills. The following is my opinion. Section 151.05 of the city's codified ordinances provides healthcare for full-time employees. The legislation before you proposes to amend this section to allow healthcare benefits for the mayor and law director, both elected, and two employees in the law department who are not elected. The first issue that presents itself is whether the providing of such benefits would violate provision within the Ohio revise code and Charter Article 4 prohibiting the changing of compensation for the mayor and law director during their existing term. The second issue is whether or not these employees fall under the category of full-time for purposes of healthcare benefits. As to the first issue, there are multiple Ohio ethics opinions and court cases relative to the issue of interim pay increases and whether or not healthcare would be considered compensation based on the Eighth District Court of Appeals opinion from the City of Lakewood. The court concluded that, in the case of charter municipality, the General Assembly has no authority on this issue. More recently, I've received an opinion from the Ohio Ethics Commission from 2012 regarding the same issue for another municipality as to providing healthcare benefits for its elected officials. The Ohio Ethics Commission declared that it does not have jurisdiction over charter municipality, and the legislation adopted by the city's legislative authority providing such benefits. As to the second issue, the Charter of Seven Hills does not describe the mayor's position as full-time or part-time as to healthcare, but is really not the deciding factor. The Patient Protective Affordable Care Act requires employers with 50 or more full-time or part-time equivalent employees must provide the employees with coverage. Seven Hills has over 220 employees. The act defines full-time as employees who work 30 hours or more per week. There is no exception for public employees. Therefore, we examine the actual circumstances, it reveals that the mayor provides much more than 30 hours per week of service to the City of Seven Hills, as does each of the employees in the law department. Therefore, it is, in my opinion, and you are so advised, that there is no legal restrictions on providing healthcare benefits to the mayor, law director, and two assistant law directors as provided for in ordinance number 39-2025. The adoption of this would be legal and enforceable. Any questions on that?
No, sir.
We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 39-2025.
Mr. President.
Council Pro Tem Costanzo.
I move to suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance 39-2025 by title only for its first and final reading.
Curriazza, second, roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriassus.
Yes.
An ordinance to amend section one-five-one oh-five E healthcare benefits as contained in chapter one-five-one, employees generally of title five administrative of part one administrative code of the codified ordinances of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Is there further motion?
Mr. President.
Council pro temp Costanzo.
I move to approve the emergency clause in section four of ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-two-five.
Curie has a second roll call.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Curriasis?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Snitzky?
Yes. Is there further motion?
Mr. President.
Council pro temp Costanzo.
I move to pass ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-two-five as an emergency measure.
Curie has a second roll call.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Curriasis?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Snitzky?
Yes. Ordinance number thirty-nine dash twenty-two-five has passed. We now go to the third reading of amended resolution number four dash twenty-two-five.
Mr. President.
Councilman Morrow.
I move that we suspend the rules under our charter and read amended ordinance, amended resolution four dash twenty-two-five by title only for its third and final reading.
Curie has a second roll call.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Curriasis?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Snitzky?
Yes.
A resolution to adopt the solid waste management plan, plan update twenty-two-six dash twenty-forty for the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste Management District and declaring an emergency.
Is there further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Morrow.
I move that we approve the emergency clause found in section four of amended, ah, sorry, amended resolution four dash twenty-two-five.
Curie has a second roll call.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Curriasis?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Snitzky?
Yes. Is there further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Morrow.
I move that we adopt amended resolution four dash twenty-two-five.
Curie has a second roll call.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Curriasis?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Snitzky?
Yes. Amended resolution number four dash twenty-two-five has been adopted. Council open, uh, to, council open to the audience for comments. Pierre? Yeah. As long as it's under three minutes.
First of all, I want to congratulate you on passing the race for the mayor. But I don't think it is fair for a mayor like him not to be adopted immediately, at least of, I don't know what the rules are, but I feel that it should be adopted immediately, or at least part of his term that's left for that. That's my, that's the only thing I can say. Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Okay. Can't do it. We, I believe we looked into it. You cannot do, you have to wait until next term.
Good evening, council, mayor, assistant law director. I really am at loss for words. Carol Pallett in Sparrow Flight Drive. I, I do not understand how one councilperson can be above the law director, the assistant law director of the comments that were written today. I'm sorry spoken. I cannot understand how we have someone who is serving and just gets along with this. I would have to say that I am not more educated than law director or an assistant law director. And once upon a time, years ago, when I was serving on a committee, full disclosure, I was told by a councilperson that she holds grudges and will never take them back. Is there no council something to suggest appropriate? Nets of these kinds of things? Thank you, Mr. President Council. I'm sorry. But this does not seem understandable to me. Thank you.
Report from mayor's safety.
Director.
Ed McCann again. I'm not going to name any names, but I have to wonder about a councilperson that in two thousand twenty-three opposed putting ballot, basically taking away term limits on the issue, but now opposes not putting it on the ballot. So where's the consistency? This is kind of dogpiling on Carol that, you know, big argument in two thousand twenty-three, we can't, oh, no, we can't put that on the ballot. We can't let the voters decide, which was the end of that person for me. But now wants it on the ballot, and I'm just saying that so it goes out to anybody listening to think about that come next election, Stacy.
You can't do that, Ed. Report from the mayor's safety director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everyone involved with the two thousand twenty-five home days. Well, another excellent success. Got to give a shout, thank God, the weather. I mean, we had a big storm coming in Saturday and it split and events went on as scheduled. So maybe I'm not supposed to say that in a building like this, but I will. So everybody was safe, had fun. Let's see, Paige in our community service department and Director Terry and that whole team and so many volunteers make that event special. And as far as I was concerned, it was another home run. And on behalf of all the officials up here, I want to thank anyone that had any involvement, whether you attended, volunteered, or got a raffle ticket. Thank you. You're part of what makes a city a community. You know, things like this where we all get together at the summer concerts and the egg hunts and the things that have been sorely missing in the past that are happening once again. And you can't do that without a team. You gotta have a vision. You gotta have a way to pay for it. But after you get the vision and the pay for it, you gotta have a really good team, and I think I have an excellent one. So thank you to all the people that were involved in that. Thank you to all those that had nice words to say about what we've accomplished over the last eight years. Because some of it started when I was council president, and we're going to do everything we can up here to see that that continues for a long time to come. And thank you to council for the things they did. They passed this evening. I think they're all important. And I'll wrap up my comments with that. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the kind words. And I'll continue to work my butt off for you as long as I'm around. So thank you.
We now go to reports from directors. Director of Finance?
My report is on file with the clerk. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Director of Law.
No report this evening. Thank you.
Director of Public Service, Bryda?
My report's on file with the clerk. Thanks.
City Engineer?
Thank you. My report is on file with the clerk, council. Thank you.
Building Commissioner Grassy?
My report's on file with the clerk.
Thank you. We now go to miscellaneous. Councilman Snitzky?
Yes. We have a couple floor motions here dealing with zoning variances. I, I'm just curious, is, are the Bodnar's here or the DiAmico's here?
The Bodnar's are here.
Okay. I'm sorry? Bodnar's, okay. You say potato, I say potato. Okay. Budnar, I like that. All right. Eight-eight-one Meadview Drive, Joseph and Pamela Bodnar. Now see, I'm confused. The board voted whether or not to grant the applicant and property owners, Joseph and Pamela Bodnar, eight-eight-one eight-eight-one Meadview Drive at eight-inch variance to ordinance number nine-three-one oh-four B one A, property line setback to allow the proposed installation of a four-foot high fence on the property line as depicted in the submitted drawings. It was passed by the board three to nothing. I'm going to let Justin Costanzo, who's the, who was the representative from council at that meeting, to give us a little synopsis about what went on.
Okay. I got to sit in for councilperson Kelly and be the liaison for this meeting. Both you mentioned passed unanimously. There was not a ton of questions. I want to read first for eight-eight-one Meadview Drive when we're on. The practical difficulty, I believe, was regarding the property line setback. Property in question has an in-ground sprinkler system that was installed by the previous owners. The sprinkler has replaced throughout the yard, some of them being as close to six inches of the property lines in some areas. Placing the fence eight inches or more from the property line would result in the sprinkler system being outside the fence and could possibly cause fence to deteriorate faster than normal. Bottom line, the sprinkler system is interfering with the place, placing of the fence. Also, placing the fence more than eight inches from the line could damage the sprinkler system. As for some questions with the board, Mr. Fletcher had one concern. First, thank you. One more question. If approved with concrete footings encroached on the property, Mrs. Bodnar said I will, I will sure, make sure it does not. And I want to reiterate with these two, there were three letters in support from the neighbors as well, too. Then I'm going to go over to Director Gerson or Commissioner Grassy if they have anything to add from my first notes.
Engineer Gerson, no, I was in attendance at that meeting and I didn't see any problem with moving the fence. It will still be on the applicant's property, so it made sense in this case, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. No comments.
As I said before, this passed unanimously and there's some practical difficulty. So Tom, do you have any questions or does council have any questions?
I read through the minutes and I saw the practical difficulty when I read through the minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Backing up here, eight-eight-one Meadview Drive, Joseph and Pamela Bodnar, a variance to nine variance to ordinance number nine-three-one point oh-four B one A, property line setback to allow the proposed installation of a four-foot high fence on the property line as depicted in the submitted drawings. I propose a vote. Can I get a second, please?
Curie has a second.
A roll call, please.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Curriasis?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Snitzky?
Yes.
Second variance, the board voted whether or not to grant the applicant and property owners, Joseph and Pamela Bodnar, eight-eight-one Meadview Drive, a variance to ordinance number nine-three-one point oh-four B four C, fence and wall designs to allow the proposed installation of a four-foot-high uncoated chain-link fence on the property line as described in the submitted drawings. Again, it passed three to nothing. Can I get a second, please?
Curie has a second.
Roll call, please.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Curriasis?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Snitzky?
Yes. As to the eight-nine-three Meadview Drive, Alexander DiAmico, the board voted whether or not to grant the applicant and property owner, Alexander DiAmico, eight-nine-three Meadview Drive at eight-inch variance to ordinance number nine-three-one point oh-four B one A, property line setback to allow the proposed installation of a four-foot-high fence across the property line to connect with the fence at eight-eight-one Meadview Drive as depicted in the submitted drawings. Again, it passed three to nothing. Can I get a second, please?
Curie has a second.
Roll call, please.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Curriasis?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Snitzky?
Yes.
And lastly, the board voted whether or not to grant the applicant and property owner, Alexander DiAmico, eight-nine-three Meadview Drive, a variance to ordinance number nine-three-one point oh-four B four C, vents, fence and wall design to allow the proposed installation of a four-foot-high uncoated chain-link fence across the property line and connect to the fence at eight-eight-one Meadview as depicted in the submitted drawings. Again, it passed three to nothing.
Councilman Snitzky?
Yes.
If I may suggest, if you do the next motion, because they're both were passed unanimous, there doesn't be, appear to be any dissent, and then you can approve them with one if there's no division of the question with one vote.
We're already on the last one. So there's no we're there already, sir. The board voted whether, okay. So again, it passed three to nothing. Can I get a second, please?
Curie has a second.
Uh, vote, please.
Costanzo?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Curriasis?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Snitzky?
Yes. We now go to miscellaneous comments from council. Councilperson Kelly?
I have no comment. Thank you.
Councilman Elliott?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Councilman Morrow?
Uh, thank you, everyone, for great home days. They get better and better and better every year. I had family up from Columbus and my little cousins told everyone down there that I was the mayor. So for a week, I was the mayor in Westerville, which was fun.
Could I have the floor for just a minute?
Yeah, Joe, yeah.
Just for a minute?
Yeah, just a minute.
Okay. I was gonna call.
Seven Hills has been going downhill for quite a while. When I was on the planning commission, I was on for a number of years.
Get closer to the mic, Joe.
To show you how bad it was getting here, we were told to vote the way they told us to. Within a two-day period, the entire planning commission resigned because they're looking to see when I terms her up and this and that, and they Delacour was the mayor, but he wasn't, he couldn't do anything. He was stuck. But if you think I'm kidding that we all quit, you can look at the records. The entire planning commission walked out. And independents was telling Seven Hills they were happy, you know, they couldn't believe how, what we were accomplishing because we really looked at stuff. Now everything is running fine. But it, it was getting bad. It was getting bad. So a lot of us had, like I say, we just stuck to our guns, stick with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, Councilman Snitzky?
Oh, I have one more thing.
That's one more.
Someone wanted to speak about the Abbey Gate ceremony. Yeah.
On August twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, our nation lost thirteen heroes. Ohio resident Maxton Soviak was one of the thirteen. I made a promise to his mom three years ago that I would do everything I could to keep his memory alive. And that was a blanket promise to all thirteen families. Last year, I reached out to Mayor Biaseada and I, I asked him if he would be willing to let me use City Hall outside to honor all thirteen. Actually, what mayor, the mayor asked me was, let's have lunch. I got about one sentence in and he said, whatever you need, you can have it. Jen was an invaluable resource for that. Next month, in less than a month, is the fourth anniversary, and I'm having my second annual Community Day of Remembrance for the thirteen. So I wanted to invite the whole community, city council, Mr. Mayor, at nine o'clock in the morning on August twenty-sixth to help me show that we appreciate the sacrifices of those mostly twenty-year-olds that never made it home. So this year, we're going to do it again, and a state senator is coming in and she's going to have a pretty big announcement about that date. So I just wanted to say thank you to my city, and I hope everyone in the community, all my neighbors, surrounding communities can make it, and we show our appreciation for the sacrifices, the families of those thirteen made. So I hope to see everybody on the twenty-sixth. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Councilman Snitzky?
There's been a lot said here tonight.